I call this meeting to order. This is the organizational school board meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 14th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to organize the board for the 2019 calendar year. We will begin with the oath of office. So for board members, our re-elected board member Jeff Quinale and Julie Pritchard, and newly-elected board member Tom Baraniac and Ellen Iverson as current board vice chair will administer the oath of office. So if the three of us can move around to the other side of the table. Do I be sure first caption?
Pardon?
Correct. Your floor here is good?
You're good.
Okay.
Okay. It is an honor to be elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility along with the other members of the school board for equitable and quality education of every student in the Northfield School District. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board formulates the educational goals and sets the course for the Northfield Public Schools. As a board, we are accountable to the community and must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we also serve as key advocates for education on behalf of our students and our community. We must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering educational excellence for every student. Having signed the acceptance of office and the oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me? Please raise your right hand. I swear that I will support
I swear that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
and that I will discharge faithfully
and I will discharge faithfully
the duties of the office of school board member
the duties of the office of school board member
of Independent School District 659
of Independent School District 659
to the best of my judgment and ability
to the best of my judgment and ability.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Okay. Excellent. We will move on now to the remainder of the meeting. Dr. Hillman, there was an item in the table file?
Yes, we added one item to this evening's organizational school board meeting table file, and it's an updated analysis of regional school board member stipends for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We'll now proceed with the election of board officers. As the acting chair, I ask for nominations for the office of the chair.
No.
I would nominate as chair of the school board Julie Pritchard.
Okay. Julie Pritchard.
I want to say that she has led us through some difficult times and has a respect for the community and has the understanding of the educational process in Northfield. And I would nominate Julie Pritchard as chairperson.
Okay. Julie Pritchard is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. All those in favor of Julie Pritchard as board chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Julie Pritchard as board chair. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence and support, and I look forward to working with such an amazing board in the coming year. So we will continue now with the elections of remaining officers. Office of vice chair. Nominations are now in order for office of vice chair. Amy.
I am delighted to nominate Ellen Iverson for the office of vice chair to continue in her excellent situation as been the vice chair, and she's done an excellent job. So I'd love to see her continue.
Okay. Thank you. Ellen Iverson is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations for office of vice chair are closed. All those in favor of Ellen Iverson as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ellen Iverson as vice chair. Julie. Well, now, nominations are now in order for office of clerk. Jeff.
I nominate Noel Strattonone.
Okay. Noel Strattonone is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of clerk are closed. All those in favor of Noel Strattonone as clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noel Strattonone is clerk. Congratulations. For our last officer position, we will ask for nominations for office of treasurer.
I nominate Rob Hardy.
Okay. Rob Hardy is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of treasurer are closed. All those in favor of Rob Hardy as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rob Hardy. Congratulations, you are treasurer. All right. We'll move on to items for individual action. We are doing a couple of different things this year, so we'll move through the list. The first one being set dates, times, and location for regular school board meetings. It's our understanding that if we do it by calendar year, we are fulfilling some of the previously different way of posting meetings. So this will help facilitate the information to our community regarding board meetings. So is there a motion to approve, as presented, the schedule for school board meetings, January 2019 through January 2020, as presented? Regular meetings of the Northfield School Board will begin at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Mondays of each month and will be held in the Northfield High School Media Center, with the exception of March, June, July, and December, when we meet only once on the second Monday of the month. Is there a motion? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion? Yes.
I believe the last two dates are wrong. It should be 2020.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said January 2020.
Yeah. It's just on this.
Oh, I'm see, I'm sorry. So we'll make that corrected on the, we'll make that corrected to January 2020 on the attached document. Okay. With document corrections, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now will move on to school board member stipends. As you know, we did have a discussion in December for the first time, really, in a decade, as we know, since we have increased board stipends. So we did have a discussion in December and reviewed some data around where the Big Nine and some other districts were at. And in your table file is an updated recap of school board stipends. The recap we reviewed in December was through December of 2017. This was an updated report was available, so this is December of 2018 data. As indicated on the recap, school districts within the Big Nine, Austin, Owatonna, and Red Wing, all made adjustments in this last, in the last, in the 2018 year. So the discussion, just to recap, centered around, really, the importance of the stipend in terms of ensuring that we're providing a stipend that would allow for anyone who would want to run for the board and would maybe be deterred by some expenses like childcare, et cetera. And so we, we understand that that may be a deterrent for some running for the board and looking long-term as to where we should be at in terms of the board for attracting new board members. We did have a discussion around that. I acknowledge that we recognized it was understandably uncomfortable talking about board stipends in terms of, really, where we're personally at, but that we are really looking at it in a more, a broader vision of, and a broader perspective of how we attract those interested in running for school board and have some expenses that would maybe help, be helpful to have a stipend to, to help with some of the expenses of childcare, et cetera, for being on the board. So the board recap that I provided in the table file does show the Big Nine average with Rochester is now at $300 a month excluding Northfield and $336 a month for the chair. And we did do the calculation of taking Rochester out of that calculation because they are significantly higher than the rest of the board nine, or rest of the Big Nine. So Big Nine average without Rochester and excluding Northfield is $257 for board members and $286 a month for board share. Northfield is currently at $190 a month for board members and $250 for board share. So because this is an item for individual action, is there a motion to establish board member stipends for 2019? Amy.
Yes. I would like to move that we establish stipends for board members at $275 and $325 per month for the chair, starting on the next fiscal year, which is July 1st.
So, I'm sorry, I just want to be sure. $275 for board members and what was it?
$325 for the chair.
Okay. And that would be effective?
July 1st.
July 1st of 2019. So that increase would be as part of the new fiscal budget of that 1920 school year. So just to recap, there is a motion on the floor for 200, an increase to $275 per month board member stipend and $325 per month for chair stipend. Do I have a second? Second by Jeff. Discussion?
Can I add to my reasoning for this?
Sure.
Okay. So I took the numbers that we had, the new numbers, and I also wanted to look at some other ways to evaluate those numbers, too. And I came, I think it's important that we stick with sort of the Big Nine reference because they are a peer group. And I thought of one way of looking at it, taking the Big Nine, removing both Rochester, which had the highest stipend per month, and then Winona, which had the lowest, which is a common way of, when you're choosing, figuring out an average, to get rid of the high and the low, to get rid of the outliers. And at that point, the average for the remaining school districts was $283 per month per member and $331 per chair. So my suggestion was actually lower than that averages. And then I also just looked at the median number, another way of looking at it, and the median was $275 per month for board members and $300 per chair. But we have historically given the chair a bit more than that, and I do see how much extra work that Julie has provided, so I thought it would be nice to stay with $325. Then just for, I think, I don't want to detract too much from the conversation, but since we had all of these different schools listed on that stipend sheet, I just, out of curiosity, looked at all, an average of all 13 of the school districts that we listed, and the average of all of those 13 was $345 per month for board members and $380 for the chair. So I think my suggestion is well within the, within what is, would be an average stipend for our region. And also, I believe that the board stipends also, we are elected representatives, and I know I came into this thinking I'm from the volunteer world. I was a volunteer, I was a volunteer, I was a volunteer. And when I became a school board member, I started out as a, thinking of it as a volunteer, and I now become, so I think of it more as elective representatives. And I think most elective representatives everywhere get some sort of compensation for their time. And frankly, the number of hours required in this position, not only with just the board meetings, but all the other committee meetings and going to school events, and even this amount does not really, really compensate for the time spent on this position. So I, what I want to do is provide enough compensation so we can attract other skilled people and they'll see it as a valued position in the community. And that's how I came up with my numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Rob.
I think that the way that Amy has come up with the numbers is very good, and I appreciate the work that you've done. I would feel more comfortable, since at this point, we're not trying to attract any more new members or compensate new members until 2020, I feel more comfortable. This was a suggestion that Noel actually made last time, or he mentioned that in the past, the implementation had been delayed until right before the next school board election. So I'd rather, instead of this July, start it effective July 2020, so that it would be more of a increase for the incoming, there'll be four, possibly four new, possibly some returning, but I would rep, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable delaying the implementation until July 2020.
Okay. Other comments? Jeff.
And I would be more in favor of what I heard you suggest before, was the middle of the July this year. There was a, instead of that, I mean, 2020, what did you say the next?
Well, as part of the motion, the motion reads the increase to $275 for board members, $325 for chair, effective July 1st, 2019.
I need that as you know.
Other questions, comments, board members have? No.
I've been thinking about this, which is sometimes scary for me, but I believe that it might be appropriate that we stay within the average of the Big Nine excluding Rochester. I think that would be an appropriate number. I don't think anyone would disagree with that. And I find that a jump from 190 up to 275 is a, is a high percentage. And I don't feel comfortable with that.
So as the latest recap reads, based on December 2018 data, just to recap for board members, the Big Nine average without Rochester and excluding Northfield would be $257
Yes.
for board members and $286 for chair. In order to, you know, we have a motion on the, on the table for the 275 and 325, so anything else would have to be entertained as an amendment. Is there any other questions? Ellen.
I don't actually have a question, but I just thought, since we, I speak to the, I guess, I'm, I'm less uncomfortable with the amount because I thought it was pretty sound reasoning and it would put us right in the snap, right in the middle of where things were. I guess, in terms of the timing, I can appreciate what you're saying, Rob, about delaying it for a year, and I guess I could go either way. I, I think that if you're starting to think about running for office, you may look at it sooner and want to, you know, by delaying it, you may not realize that the stipend increases. I also don't think that's going to be the end-all to getting, to encourage. I think we're going to, as a board, want to think of some other ways to encourage people to run in two years beyond just an increase in stipend, but I think this is a long overdue examination of it. So I guess, well, I really appreciate that consideration. I don't know that, you know, I guess, I guess I would not think that, you, I think that there's some facility to delaying it a year because, you know, we're not, we're really uncomfortable raising our own salaries, but I think there's also, if we're going to try to start to encourage others to think about running for office, that the problem of having it July 1, 2020 is they'll be filing in August. Will they pay attention? I don't know. I guess, I, I wonder, would, would we want to do it sooner just to make sure that people running for office knew that it was going to be a different stipend? But I'm, I'm kind of talking in circles, so, but I think that I would be thinking we should go ahead with a motion that's on the table, and it's been long overdue. I think then we're showing some value to what we're doing at the same time. It's not a lot, but, but it shows that for anybody who's considering running for office, that we're not just trying to put a carrot in front of them, but instead, we're valuing the work now. So I guess, I guess I'm saying that probably, my inclination is to support the motion as stated, but I, I appreciate what you're saying, Rob, and I think that the more consideration beyond even the stipend that we should talk about over the coming year of how we can encourage others earlier to think about running.
Jeff.
The last, you know, I would have probably preferred maybe 10 bucks a year, whatever else it is, but I started in 2008, you started in 2008, it's a couple of years I wasn't on the board, but, I mean, that's 10 years ago that there's been any increase. I mean, what, before that was the increase. I mean, it's kind of like, just something that, bringing up and haven't done anything with for 10 years, so. Yeah, I think the average, that's kind of where we wanted to be anyway with the school districts. I mean, we're the best school district, but, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I add to that? You brought it up. I, part of this, looking up all of the school district information, I went to a website called themitch.com, and it's a data collection website to help people decide where to move to. And of all of those 13 other school districts listed, they give each school district an A, B, C grade, we had an A. The only one that was better was Zidina with an A+. So it made me very proud.
They can do with their tax base.
Made me very proud to be part of the Northfield School District.
No.
What is the criteria for an A?
I, they had different level.
It's a, we've actually looked into their calculation. This is probably the first time you've heard it because with these external groups, we're often very careful in trumpeting those pieces just because they are looking at it from a number, it's, we're of course very proud of it. There's a number of things that go into it. It would, I had hope lines than do an analysis of what the criteria are, but I just, I don't recall all of it off the top of my head.
I never got an A in anything.
Some of the test scores, you know, some of some other things.
The one thing that we got a little ding for is that we didn't have as large extracurricular activities offerings.
Didn't have enough room on the page.
So, and I think it's because our school districts isn't as large as the other ones.
All right. Good discussion. I think, again, I acknowledge, you know, I appreciate Ellen acknowledging that it is not a discussion we're comfortable with or really used to having because it has been over a decade since we have increased stipends. I think, you know, we, we have, have really taken our time and really evaluated why we want to do this, and I think Ellen articulating the reasons around being able to ensure that we're attracting, you know, good, good members to the board is, is our responsibility as board members to continue to, to be sure that we're serving the board in place, is serving the district and the community well. So are there other comments that, or discussion?
Could you just remind me of the numbers?
Yes. So, yeah, I did want to clarify. So just a reminder of the motion on the floor is 275 for board members, 325 for chair.
Per month.
Per month. We have also, in our discussion, talked about the Big Nine average, and just to reiterate those numbers, the Big Nine average without Rochester and Winona, again, as the two outliers on the top and the bottom, is 283 for the board and 331 for the chair. So our current motion, we would be below the average of Rochester, Winona, but the average with just taking out Rochester as the one outlier, we would be at, the average is 257 for board and 286 for chair. So if you followed all that, the current motion is right in between those. Yes, Rob?
Okay. I feel like my suggestion is not a hill to die on, and I think this is going to pass, so I'm going to support it, so I just, don't worry about me.
All right. Well, thanks. I mean, I think you make a really good point in that, that has really been the premise of our discussion, but I also think that Ellen's point is well-made in terms of someone not paying necessarily attention to that, and I know that people do start thinking about filing and doing a July 2020 input, you know, the, the effective date, that it's really potentially lost in, in the big picture. And we know it's a factor for some people who run for board in terms of childcare and some other expenses, so we really do want to set ourselves in a good position for 2020 with having four potential board seats open. So if there's any other, yes, no.
The, the thought that it puts it in the middle of the Big Nine, I think is logical. I'm comfortable with that. My thought of adding that we would only change, we would change the salary at the end of the year, or the beginning of next year had to do with, with the elections.
Sure.
So that anybody would say, we, you know, we weren't raising our own salary, but that's only true for two people, our point, but really, the election cycle would drive it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can support this.
Okay. So any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay. We do have a motion and a second, and just to reiterate, the motion is to establish school board stipends for the 2019 calendar year of 275 for board members, 325 for chair. Excuse me. It would be effective July 1st, 2019. So the motion should really read, "We will maintain current stipends until June 30th, 2019, effective July 1st, 2019. The stipend would be established at 275 for board members and 325 for chair." All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Excellent. All right. So we are going to move on. Again, kind of an interesting organizational meeting for us in that we do have one other, we have a new, an opportunity to establish, and it's just establishing it for just one time, is around the designation of the, combining the duties of the office of clerk and the treasurer of the school board in one person in the finance office of the school district. So in other words, it's just, we still have our board officers, this is just sort of the official district person who actually does that important work. So it is a resolution, which I will read quickly, and then it will require a roll call vote. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.14 subdivision 1 empowers the school board to combine the duties of the office of clerk and treasurer of the school board in one person in the office of business affairs of the school district, whereas the school district has decided to combine the duties of clerk and treasurer in one person in the office of business affairs. Therefore, be it resolved that the director of finance of the school district is designated by the school board of Independent School District Number 659 to perform the duties of clerk and treasurer of the district. Is there a motion? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. This is a resolution, so it requires a roll call vote. Amy.
Irwitz.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Strattonone.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Baraniac.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Pritchard.
Aye.
Good. Motion carries. So that will remain in place unless we have a, a need to change at the district level. The last item for individual action is appointing board committee members. I did, board members in your packet were, was a recap of all of the various committees that we serve on. I would just ask, over the next two weeks, if you take a review of your current assignments and where you'd like to see yourself as board committee liaison work, and get back to me, and I will make those final appointments at our January 28th meeting. Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda. Is there anything anyone wants to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. That concludes our 2019 organizational meeting, so with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Moving.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Okay.